Thank you. Good morning. We will call this work session to order. Today is April 6th, 2020, 10 o'clock. And we are joining our citizens today by a different mode, which is technology. Technology advancement is very critical in a time especially around during this coronavirus situation. I hope and pray that, this is for the citizens of Douglas County. I hope and pray that you and your families are doing well amid this coronavirus pandemic. Under the Open Meetings Act of Georgia, our meeting today is legitimate. And certainly as because of this extenuating circumstance. Today, we will not have public comment, and that is not on purpose. But I will ask that our citizens, if you have any public comment, if you could email your individual district commissioners or myself or either our county administrator, and we will respond accordingly. Thank you for your patience and consideration during this coronavirus pandemic. Board of Commissioners, thank you so much for being here and welcome today. Certainly, I hope that you all have had good weeks, a good week or so. We all have been extremely busy and we're so delighted again to just be here on person. Everybody, I guess I will call roll this morning. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Robinson, are you here? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell, Henry Mitchell III, are you here? Toriya Carthon, District Three Commissioner, thank you. District Four Commissioner Anne Jones Guyer, are you here? Okay, so at least we have, we have a quorum. Okay. All right, Board of Commissioners, we will certainly start off. If you look at your agenda, we have the approval of the minutes and that will be for tomorrow at 10 o'clock in our meeting. So we just be prepared to approve accordingly. So I encourage you to read your minutes this evening. And most of you, I know you probably, probably already have read your minutes. Resolutions, we have a resolution tomorrow and that resolution will be read by, it'll be delivered by Ron Roberts. A resolution to pursue a 2020 roadside enhancement and beautification council grant in the amount of $50,000 to be used for transportation gateway projects with no match are required and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Is Ron Roberts, are you on the phone by any chance?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
This will be here today.
I'm here.
Ron, could you just elaborate on this for us?
Absolutely. Yes, so the roadside enhancement beautification council grant is to support the I-20 landscape enhancement initiative. The goal is to improve the four interchanges on I-20 through Douglas County. And this grant application and the resolution is in support of the I-20 state Route Six Thornton Road project at that location. This grant lots up to $50,000, which is the maximum that, that is allowed. And that's why we're seeking approval for the, for the resolution so that we can add it to the application that we will submit. It's my understanding that the projects along I-20 will be paid for out of the tree fund. This is just a extra $50,000 to help us buy the plants and, and participate, get GDOT to participate with some of the project. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
We have any questions from the Board of Commissioners or comments regarding what Ron just presented? Vice Chairman Robinson?
Okay. Ron, can you hear me? I can. All right, let's, let's see how this works. All right, so this is for $50,000. We're enhancing our, our contribution or investment in this area. Is that correct? What, what type of, what type of landscaping is being done? Do you know?
Yes, sir. We put together, I've got most of the, the application completed. I'm just waiting on some final prices from Hughes Ray. But it's, there's a, there's a litany of different types of plants and things that were, that were supposed to be indicative of the, the region and lower maintenance to maintain. I believe that the, the, the presentation came through the Board of Commissioners last June, I think, from, from Hughes Ray. They had a slideshow and they showed what they were actually going to plant at each of the, each of the interchanges, each of the four interchanges through, through the county that were identified for this project. So it includes, I can't pronounce some of these, Commissioner.
It's okay, no, that's okay. So what were the four interchanges? Just for the public, again, we, we've been out of pocket for a minute, so just be patient and then reframing what this is all about. Which four interchanges, even though I know this is specific to Thornton, is part of a bigger picture? Can, do you know? Or anybody else can weigh in?
I know that, well, I know Thornton and Post Road and I want to say Lee Road. I'm not sure. I'm not sure the fourth one, Commissioner.
So Ron, hey, this is Mark, Mark Teal. So the intersections are Liberty Road, Post Road, Lee Road, Thornton Road.
Okay. Liberty is the one I forgot.
And the bedroom role is probably being taken care of by the city? Is that what this is about, Mark? Do you remember?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. So I'll stay in my lane. Lee Road, Thornton Road. Now, I know that the state came along and they did a lot of pruning back, you know, clear, you know, cleared it out. And now we're going into beautify. What, what, what is the ultimate vision for that, for, for that area? I mean, Madam Chair or whomever, who, who can speak to, why are we doing this?
Are you asking why we're doing the beautification project? That was certainly, it, it, it sends a strong message to not only our citizens of Douglas County, but also to our visitors that we are open for business. And also it has a pristine look and it allows us to maybe just, it, it, it has a different feel for anyone that comes into our community. It's been a long time coming. Nothing has ever, we never had any gateway signage in Douglas County, no landscaping. And that's critical that number one, that we compete with other counties because we're just like everybody else. We want to be at least on the map when it comes to consideration for businesses to come here and shops and, and malls and different other things. You know, if we had a new mall or anything that wanted to come or any type of retail stores, certainly we wanted to have a very pristine look. So when they come in, they, you know, of course, it, it would be no questions asked. Douglas County would be the choice. So we want to be the choice, the leader of choices, should I say, beautification of choice for Georgia.
Yeah, and, and that was really just a step in, in my closing comment. You know, if you, if you think about it, again, Douglas is prideful. It, it, it doesn't necessarily want to be metro. It acknowledges its rural roots. But at the same point, it, it, it is a different character areas here. And one of the things I, I, being sort of the eastern wall, which is, my, my citizens typically say, well, I moved out to this bedroom community by design. But can we, can we, can we cut the grass? Can, can we, and we talked about common areas. Can, can we have streetlights? And I, I think what I hear sometimes is that, but can we, I mean, it's okay to be organic, but can we have some, some, some style? Can we have some characteristic to it? It, it just, I mean, can we shape it up a little bit and stuff? So I, I see this is just enhancing our look. Obviously, when people come into our community alone, I-20, they get up as these inters, um, interchanges. It's important that, I mean, it's what, ladies, y'all understand, impact walls.
Yes.
You walk into a house, it's all about impact. You roll up off that I-20, you're like, okay, what do you see? Do you see lights? Do you see manicure? So it matters. It matters about our character and stuff. So we're trying to take it to the next level. Obviously, each, obviously, intersection is a little bit different, but I think there's a consistency that's trying to be done. But I acknowledge what this is, what you guys are doing, Madam Chair, and support it. But I just wanted to highlight it because again, we haven't talked about these things in light of, you know, obviously what's going on. I just wanted to refresh the citizen's mind. I yield the floor, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. Any other comment from any other Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Commissioner Guyer?
Yes. Ron, because of revenues being so low and everything, could you explain where this is going to be funded? How it's going to be funded? Because it's a, it's not tax dollars, so I, I want the public to know that.
It's a, yes, ma'am, the, well, the, the, this is funded from the tree fund, actually, Commissioner.
And that comes from developers that cut down trees.
That cut down the trees. If they can't replace the trees, they pay into the tree fund. And that money is available for projects just like this. That's what, that's what the goal of the tree fund really is in, in the county. So it's already sitting there and ready for use. This is just a...
Dedicated for this use. I just wanted the public to know that we're not taking this out of our budget at this time. So I thought it was important for them to see that or hear that.
Yeah. I'll move on to the next item. County Administrator, could you give us an update? You have two things on here. But if you could just give the board an update now since we're talking about finances and what our plans on, what we've done, how we prepared in the last two weeks. So we got out of the gate a little early on finances as well, Commissioner. We just didn't only focus on COVID-19. We knew that it would have a revenue impact. And also we certainly, Vice Chairman Robinson is working with the finance team. So I will ask Mark to kick off and then Vice Chairman Robinson, I'll just ask you to just, just give the citizens an idea of what we're doing right now. Nothing has changed. Our budget is not on the ventilator yet simply because February numbers have just come in. We don't have March numbers. So Mark, if you take the floor.
Yeah, February splosh and loss numbers came in very similar to last year's. And as far as what we've done proactive measures to take. So we've put a freeze on all, the hiring of all new positions. And we've also put a stop or a freeze on all non-essential purchases. So, and I've had a couple of meetings with Purchasing Director Dawn Evers and Jennifer Holman in Finance. And so we're watching the requisitions as they come through. And it has slowed it down. The past two weeks, we have only had approximately 10 requisitions come through per week. Now, we've got some older stuff that, you know, was submitted and it's still coming through. But as far as any new requisitions, since we put this on, on, I believe it was March 25th, we've only had about 10 a week. And most all of those are public safety related, which are essential purchases. So we're going through those one by one and we're stopping everything that's not essential. And as far as revenues go, we won't really see March revenues until close to the end of April for lost and splosh, things of that nature.
Thank you. Any, any questions from our Board of Commissioners required?
And then we've also, Madam Chair, based on your direction, so I've met with Jennifer Holman a couple of times. So we're working on a revenue recovery plan. And it's still a little bit early, but we, we are thinking about it and we're getting all our ducks in a row so that when we have the numbers, we're ready.
Okay. Commissioner Guyer, I believe you had a question for Mark and then I'll talk to the Chairman of Finance and he can give us an update about the, the 25 million that's here, that how that saved our lives somewhat. Commissioner Guyer?
Yes, Mark. The revenues, the, the downfall of the revenues at this time is affecting the splosh revenues also. So have we put splosh projects on hold for right now?
Any new ones, yes, but any, any that are in the works, no, ma'am, we have not.
You mean the ones that we already had contracts on and things like that? Okay. But any new ones, we, we're putting on hold right now.
Yes, ma'am. And then once we...
Because this is going to affect splosh revenues also.
Yes, we think it will. Once we start seeing the numbers, we can recalculate the splosh. And if we need to stop ones that have contracts, we can, we can do that as well.
Really? I didn't know we could do that.
Yes, I'm assuming we can. But we're working on all that.
Yeah. Let me answer the Commissioner's question, Commissioner Guyer. The ones, as Mark just mentioned, that are in progress, we're proceeding because they are already in play. But the ones that are on the list, that we're just going to have to draw a line right now and just hold off. So we're holding the line. But you have some projects that are already started, you know what I'm saying? So we, we could just go...
I understand.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, you, you could just tell us about the, the tan and the, the percentage. We were, other counties are coming in much higher and some counties are not able to even obtain a tan because of this situation. So Vice Chairman, could you speak to our fortune here at Douglas County? How fortunate we are in Douglas County?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we came into our budget cycle this year with a little bit more than $100 million budget for easy math. And Jennifer Holman, our Finance Director, went about making sure that she was able to understand our weekly cash flow. What does it take to maintain and manage this $100 million operation on a weekly basis based on the cash that's currently in the conference? At some point, we realized that you're going to run out of cash before the taxes come in at the end of the year. So typically you get what's called a tax anticipation note. I call it a payday loan for government. Keep it simple. It allows you to float your operation to all the taxes come in at the end of the year. We went a little bit early this year and a little bit larger. I know there were some questions from the public, why we do tans and, you know, why, why are we going so early? And I'll, I'll, I'll probably frame it this way. It's about fiscal maturity, right? Knowing what to do, when to do it. Had we not moved early and been competitive and got a lot of people involved in this and, and went in with the full amount, not just enough. Get what you need. As I've always stated, never, don't nickel and dime. If you need it, get it. So I think our budget requirements was about $21 million. We went all in at $25 million. So we were able to secure that. And I think Jennifer will confirm that that should be money already closed and in the bank now. But that $25 million would float us through the end of the year. The rate was .62. That's important. .62, right? Our splosh was .171, 171. And that was a great rate, but this one was .62. That's incredible for a moderate sized county, guys. But the very next week, when this pandemic hit, everything broke loose. Everything went up. Grady's tan went to 4.65. Can you imagine us having five and six and seven percent interest rates? The world turned upside down. So sometimes it's just knowing how to move. And I think we, what Madam Chair is asking me to give the public is, we got this, it's steady. We'll make the adjustments accordingly. And I'll, I'll use this as a segue. And Madam Guyer, you're, you're accurate. There's two things we're looking at, splosh and loss. Yes, we've got the splosh. We did call for a recasting during our last meeting, a recasting of the splosh. We, we knew this from, from day one. We called for a recast, right? So we know that Terry and David Good will be working on that. And with Mark, these guys will come back by our next finance committee and say, okay, guys, all right, here's the line. Now, everything below that line, game bets off. Not that we're cutting it, it's just sort of delaying it. It's the reality of the moment. It doesn't mean that we're going to do anything, but we need to at least highlight to say, and it's about setting the public's expectation. In other words, like, okay, we know, we, we know, we, we know that you had these expectations and we'll get to it, but I'm sure the public understands. Obviously, the same thing with our operating capital. Obviously, we've got a budget. We're going to preserve and protect, obviously, our employees. But as far as these project initiatives, again, they may need to be delayed, deferred. And we'll take it one day at a time. So later on the agenda, we've got David Corbin, the Terminus. I think his contract is on the agenda. The intent is to bring him in and we'll go through what's called stress testing. One of his first assignments under this new contract and getting here like, okay, guys, just like he helped us with the budget, now we're going to have to redo this budget and recalibrate it and frame it in such a way, if this happens, if our revenue drops 10%, we do these things. If it drops 15%, we do these things. So it's more of just a framing, some scenario analysis that we're going to be doing just to prepare ourselves. It's not reactionary, guys. It's planning. It's anticipatory. But it doesn't mean that we got to go out into the public and to our, our actual employees. It's not just sort of, we're going to just go out and just cut everything. It's like steady, steady, right? Because again, we just got to take it one day at a time as the numbers come in. But nevertheless, I wanted to give that just, you know, to respond to you, Madam Chair, that we are looking at our financials. We were solid. We still had a good credit rating accordingly from the rating agencies, both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And like a lot of counties and municipalities, we are going to take a hit. I, I've been trying to suggest that for, you know, probably a, a couple of weeks. You're going to take a hit. Local municipalities do not have stop losses, right? We don't have a stop loss, right? So we got to be mindful of what's going on. But the citizens know that we, as district commissioners, are to, you know, check and balance. You guys know our job is to make sure that we're anticipating these things. And since we represent the people, making the right decisions to ensure that we, we ease the burden on the citizens, it should be no big issue. So Madam Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board before I go further? Oh, Commissioner Mitchell, I believe you're here. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had you guys on mute.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted, do you have, okay. I didn't know if you had a comment or anything. I'm going to move on if you don't. Do you have anything, Commissioner Carthon? Go on, Commissioner Mitchell, go on.
Oh, no, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. I mean, it was straight, Kelly and I and all of us have had many conversations. So yes, I know where we are and know where we need to be going and what we need to start looking at. So we're all good.
Okay. Commissioner Carthon, I want to give you opportunity.
No, I'm good. This weekend, I did send out an email to my colleagues in regards to some priorities that I did want us to look at. And I had already got with Jennifer Holloman about some of the cuts possibly to be made so, with percentages. So I just, you know, I'm glad to hear that we are being preemptive as opposed to reactionary. We were preemptive in going out for those tans. We need to be preemptive in how we go forward with our budget from here on out. I do have a question for Mark, though. What do we do about some of our bills that are occurring like every 30 days? Do we pay those in advance? Are we paying them on time? Or what, what, what are we doing in regards to that?
No, we're paying them on time. So we have staff checking the mail and we're checking invoices. So it's business as usual.
Okay. That's all. Yes, I yield, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthon. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, yeah, we are working, actually, Mark and I started two weeks ago just on the plan. I know I've had a million balls in the air and I know that I spoke to Vice Chairman Robinson and I said, take the ball and run. And he promised and assured me that he would. And I know he's reached out to all our district commissioners. So I appreciate everybody's support and looking at the money. And again, I'm looking at our citizens as well. And, and before I go any further, I want to just certainly extend my deepest condolences to the loss of five citizens here in Douglas County as a result of COVID-19. My heart goes out to the families. Again, we, we, our numbers are at 91 as of yesterday for COVID-19. And that those five deceased are in that, in the, in those numbers. So I just wanted to say that we appreciate all the support from our frontline first responders and also our healthcare employees here in Douglas County. And just appreciate everything everybody's doing. But again, my heart goes out to the families of the loss of our five citizens. So I'll move on. Let me move on and I apologize for just mentioning that, but today, technology, we, we're doing something a little different. So forgive me for not mentioning that at the beginning of our meeting. Business, well, County Administrator, you have two items. Authorization to approve a MOU and GDOT to install roadway lighting at I-20 and Lee Road interchange and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And I'm going to read tab number seven and you can just tell, tell us about both. Authorization to approve an MOU and GDOT to install roadway lighting at, lighting at I-20 Chapel Hill Road interchange and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. County Administrator, please elaborate.
Yes, ma'am. These two projects, along with the other intersections on, interchanges on I-20, were approved a couple of months ago. I think Greystone has most, they have Lee Road, Post Road, Highway Five, Chapel Hill, Liberty Road and Thornton Road. And then Georgia Power has Post Road. So these are the first two that's made it far enough into the GDOT process to have a MOU. And essentially, it's a maintenance agreement for the lights. So there's eight lights, two at each where the ramp hits the side street. So there's eight lights at, at both of these locations. And essentially, it's just a maintenance agreement with Georgia DOT that we agree to maintain these. The rest of the intersections are coming, they're just not far enough along in the process for GDOT to be ready for a MOU.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board or comments? Commissioner Guyer, do you have a comment? I believe you had a question for me about Highway Five. Did Mark answer that question for you?
Yes, ma'am. He, he said it just hasn't gone through GDOT yet. But it's in the, it's in the works. But Mark, could you explain where the revenue comes for the streetlights, please?
Yes, well, as far as this revenue for installation, it was the 2016 splosh. So there was $500,000 set aside for streetlights. So we have the ones that have been approved by the board on I-20. And then we're really close to finalizing the remaining streetlights throughout the county. And then we'll bring that back to the Transportation Committee and then to the, hopefully to the Board of Commissioners.
All right. I yield that.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. All right, we'll move on to our business items. Anybody have a question before I move on? Okay, I'm going to move on to our business item. Tab number eight, authorization to approve a contract renewal with Terminus to serve as municipal advisor for Douglas County at a cost of $6,500 a month and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Holman, are you on here?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, they're, they've had a contract for two years. So this will be their third year contract and it's up for renewal. They have not had an increase in the past two years. This one is an increase. However, was speaking with David yesterday, Mr. David Corbin yesterday, you know, in light of what, what, what's going on now, he said that he, you know, would be willing to, of course, work with us because all of this contract was discussed prior to the pandemic. And we did bring it and talk about it in the Finance Committee meeting. And it's recommended that, from the Finance Committee, that we approve or ask for authorization for y'all to approve this contract.
Okay. Jennifer, if you could just be a little more explicit about, he said he understand, what is he saying? He'll, if we approve it, he'll wait a couple of months before it's activated, before it's active? Can you explain that?
Yes. He said that he would, in light of what's going on, that he would definitely work with us in the sense of postponing the increase to, you know, when things are stabilized.
Okay. Any questions from the boards or board or comments? Any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yes, thank you. No, I, I, I haven't, good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
Board of Commissioners, I have, again, there was a full recommendation from the Finance Committee prior to this pandemic. And so it was as is. The recent, or this, this recent consideration being presented by Terminus, I, I have no knowledge of it. So, but I get the point. I, I guess I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to at least approve the contract based on the fact that your perception of what Terminus has brought to us over the past two years, they've helped really guide and help frame a, a financial discipline. Not that we didn't have it, but it took it to a whole nother level in how to look at our, our costs, our metrics. And it's done a wonderful job, even dealing with our, our economic development projects. It was the level of analysis that I've always sort of yearned for to have here that, that, that they brought to us. They're a great set of advisors. And Jennifer, I, I, I need you to validate that. I'm not trying to script or, or do this, but our, should they go forward? I mean, we, we'll look to you. I mean, I already took my position, but Jennifer, you work with them day to day. I mean, obviously, obviously, he's for the full Board of Commissioners, but he works for you day to day. I need the public to hear, okay, who is Terminus? Because again, a lot more people don't get to see these type of meetings. Can you just give a little framework of how you work with them and the value that they brought? Can you just give a little framework of how you work with them and the value that they brought?
Absolutely. Yes, I definitely agree with everything you said, Commissioner Robinson. They have been very beneficial, not just to me, but to the entire county, to our Board of Commissioners. I really value their input. They're very professional, very open-minded to hear what we have to say, but also put in what they feel like is their opinion. Worked very well with them on different projects, from everything from economic development and helping with the tax abatement, as Commissioner Guyder knows, as well as, you know, this past budget cycle, you know, had David come and give some insight on our current budget situation. And so, now more than ever, I think their expertise and knowing what other counties are doing and cities are doing is going to be very valuable for us to know. They're also, you know, the advisor to the state. So, that speaks volumes of what they know and their, and how well respected they are. So, definitely, I can't speak, you know, any highly of them than that.
Right, right. So, to that point, and I'll close that point off, is David Corbin was involved in taking us, obviously, to New York, with meeting with the radio agencies for our SPOLOST. Right? So, they've been with us for, for a moment now. And I, and I think that that's important to highlight. And out of that came, that conversation came the need to have to create a long-term capital policy. And then they also were involved in our long-term capital plan, which obviously you guys got delivered to you right before, obviously, the pandemic hit. So, they've been involved in more, they're more strategic. They're not, you know, accounting, backward-looking, they're more forward-looking. They do a lot of different things. But again, I won't belabor this point, but I think, again, since we haven't really talked a lot in a while, it just gives us an opportunity to sort of acknowledge that every now and then, you have some consultants and they, they're commodities. I mean, these guys really built a relationship with us. And I, what I preach about them is that they're candor. I mean, obviously, they're certified, they have to, like accountants, follow the rules, but they'll tell you the truth about the numbers. May not be what you want to hear, but they're honest in this type of thing. So, for that reason, I recommend that we go ahead and adopt and accept this increase and move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. I agree as well, I echo, certainly, my first rodeo with the municipal advisors, Terminus, was New York when we went there, and that was quite a very, oh, eye-opening experience for me. Certainly, being a new chairman for Douglas County, and that was 2017. So, I have nothing but high regards and respect for their body of work. Jennifer, you've worked with them and we've really, they were responsible and instrumental in working with you on this 0.62% for our TAN, right? We got out of the gate pretty early. Is that true, Jennifer?
Yes, that is true.
So, we, I'm highly impressed with their work. So, sounds like we all on board, and I'll move on to the next one, unless someone else has a comment. Any Board of Commissioners have any other comments?
I do, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Just, just one quick question. I just want you to better explain, or Jennifer, you better explain to me to the delay. Exactly what does that mean? How much of a delay? Does that alter the cost or that just alter when we pay the bill? Is that all that is?
No, not necessarily pay the bill. I'll get with him today, like I said, we probably spoke on the phone last night around 8:30, 9 o'clock. And he just said that that was something that he was thinking, you know, because of what has been going on with the pandemic, that that is something that he wanted to, for at least me to know that that's something he's taken into consideration and that he wanted, you know, to make sure that that was something that I relayed or at least discussed with y'all when I told him it was on today's agenda. So, if, you know, I will definitely reach back out to him today and get better details than just the brief conversation that I had with him yesterday or last night and send that to you in an email.
Okay, so what are we voting on, basically? Because I want to better understand the delay as well as we're voting on the increase. So, does that delay has anything to do with the increase? Or that has nothing, or this is just two separate conversations?
I think when, and I apologize for that, I think when I said delay, I meant maybe a delay of the increase, not delay of paying them their, you know, their, what they are normally getting paid. It would be the delay, a possible delay, or somehow, however, he would want to structure it or work it out. Like I said, we didn't really talk about the details, but he did say, just because of what's going on now, you know, maybe delay the increase, somehow pay it back to us in some form or fashion. And I'll get more of the details.
Got it. So, you'll get the details as to the delay and whether it will be paid on the back end, but it'll still be paid, I'm assuming. But I don't want to assume, I'd rather know exactly what this is. So, before we vote on it, I'd like to know exactly kind of what the delay is so the commission will know exactly what we're dealing with versus just assuming that the delay means something that it doesn't.
Sure.
So.
Yes, I will get that today and send y'all an email confirming what the details are.
Sounds good. I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, well, all hearts and minds are clear. We'll move on to the next item. Tab number nine, authorization to approve changes to connect Douglas bus routes 10, 30, and 40. Director Watson, are you on here?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Can you, can everyone hear me?
I can.
All right.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, what we're proposing today is we are, we do want to make changes to our routes 10, 30, and 40. These changes were discussed in the December and January Transportation Committee meetings. And also, in early February, we went to each commissioner individually and explained to them the changes that we want to make. Following that, we had a series of four public meetings where we discussed the route changes. The meetings weren't very well attended, but the people who were there had some great suggestions and comments. We didn't have any negative feedbacks about the changes that we want to make. And in fact, they, everybody was very positive about the changes, particularly the changes that we want to make to Route 40, which would take that route totally off Interstate 20, run it south on Fairburn Road, and then turn left onto Lee Road and go back into the Lithia Springs area. So, those are the changes that we're proposing. We, we asked commissioners to consider approving those changes. If the changes were approved, they will go into effect probably mid-May after we sign a new contract with our third-party provider.
Okay. Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, I believe you have something.
Excuse me. Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Chair. Just maybe a couple of comments. Obviously, you know, regarding public transportation, we're still in our pilot program. And Gary, we're what, going into our second year? End of our first full year?
Yes, sir, the first contract will end on May the 6th, I think it is. And my intention is to bring the new contract before the board at their first meeting in May to where we can enter into that contract going forward.
Yeah. And as we, as the Board of Commissioners agreed, in times past, no significant route changes could not be done unless it was vetted by, obviously, the Transportation Committee and ultimately coming for the Board of Commissioners. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so this is really truly our first significant route changes. I mean, forget, you know, changing the bus stops and stuff, we're talking about true route change. This is our first round of route changes, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Route 40, which obviously, there was always, you know, I appreciate the Route 40. Obviously, when we were going through the process of, of, of working through, you know, where would, where would the routes go? It was always this concern about getting over to Holmes, H.E. Holmes Martyr Station. And it was one of those where, Gary, I'm sure you can attest, that it was always about, you know, regional mobility alignment. That was important. In other words, Douglas is part of a bigger complex and system of mobility. You know, just like with I-20, just like with 78, just like with 166. It cuts across jurisdictional lines. In other words, it's continuity of mobility. And that being said, I remember we went through a lot of conversation regarding that 40. And it's obviously the route that really connects the other three for the most part. But I can, I always have to remember, you know, Commissioner Emeritus Mulcair and our conversations that we, we had back and forth back in the day. And I remember he argued that, Commissioner Robinson, you know, just, you know, leaving our jurisdiction and going all the way to Holmes, it's just, that's 43 cent of, you know, it's just, it's expensive and stuff, but nothing to be on the highway, you know, you're not picking up anything. And I remember I said, you know what? Commissioner Mulcair, you're right. But we got to get to Holmes. And it was only because, again, Gary and Gail, you guys realized that we worked over there with Lisa Cupid, our fellow commissioner over there, over in Cobb, we were able to work out a relationship that allows us to connect with their number 30 and go all the way over. So, it was about a partnership. It was, it was about thinking outside the box, as Madam Chair would say. It's that we're part of a greater whole. It's not just about us, right? It's not just about my individual. It's about all of us. And so, I appreciate that number 40 that obviously connects us to the bigger region. You know, it's sort of like a hub, like, just like with Delta Airlines, it only goes so far. I got to connect to the next hub. Got to keep moving. Sometimes you can go around the world, but, you know, you can go to Japan over here in 15 hours, but sometimes get all the way on the other side, you may have to make a stop. And so, I think that was important. Last point is, and that was something that, to Commissioner Mulcair's point, why are we on I-20 in the middle of traffic going down I-20 when we can go down Lee Road, go down Fairburn Road and come over Lee Road? So, I think that was also a very smart and savvy and important route change because, again, we're not making, we're not picking up any passengers. We're not driving ridership, as Commissioner Mitchell would say, by having a bus on the highway. So, I commend the staff for acknowledging that input and making that route modification. And so, to that, I mean, we'll continue to make the modifications accordingly. And again, so, my last point, Gary, is that in light of the pandemic, and this is important, what does the FTA or the Fed say about public transportation? I mean, obviously, you know, do we keep it moving, not keep it moving? What is the guidance that we're getting from the feds? Now, you're the floor, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Well, Commissioner, certainly, FTA wants systems to continue running as much as possible. And no system in the metro area has shut down. Cobb continues to run, Gwinnett continues to run, MARTA continues to run. And of course, we're running, all of us are running on a reduced schedule. But there are still people who are depending on us to get them to work in other appointments. One, one good thing about it, we've, all of our systems have endured revenue losses because of this. But the good thing is that FTA received quite a bit of money in the stimulus package that was approved. And we'll be able to go to FTA to recoup, try to recoup some of those losses.
I understood that, thank you. Madam Chair, I yield.
All right, thank you so much, Transportation Chairman, which is Vice Chairman Robinson. And thank you so much, Director Watson.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is Commissioner Carthian, I have a question for, for Director Watson. Director Watson, when you say that the meetings, the public meetings were sparse, how sparse were they?
In attendance, each one was in the neighborhood of five to six. That was it, that was, that was a disappointment to us. We used all the media sources we had to try to get the word out, but the public just didn't, didn't attend. As I said, the ones who did come had great suggestions and comments, but we would just, we would have loved to have seen more people there.
While we have the attention of some of the public, can you reiterate those media sources that we do use to put out public information so that people will come to the meetings?
Well, through our marketing consultant, the Clabby firm, we have a large social media presence. We use that a lot. We took advantage of having Rick Martin and his staff to send out email blasts and to blanket all the media, like the local newspapers, Chapel Hill News and Views, Atlanta TV stations. And we got some great coverage announcing the meetings from WSB-TV, I know. And then we also sent out a lot of flyers to the various communities and locations where we were going to have the meetings. So, we took advantage of every resource that we had as far as trying to get the word out.
Okay. And thank you for that. It's so important that our constituents know that we want their voices. We want to hear what their thoughts are in regards to the transportation. And so, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we did exhaust all opportunities and all resources to get the word out, to hear their voices. And that's one of the things I am proud about this administration is that we do want to hear people's thoughts and concerns and opinions because this is not a monarchy, this is a democracy. So.
It's their transportation system, so we want them to let us know about it.
That's right. And my second question to you is, can you talk about the changes that Connect Douglas has done in the wake of this COVID-19? Like, how are we protecting the citizens and the drivers and what are we doing?
Well, first of all, we started running a reduced schedule. We're running our Saturday schedule, which means we're starting an hour later in the morning. And we also don't have extra buses on routes during, during peak periods as far as keeping our drivers in the public safe. The drivers have been issued masks and gloves. The drivers wipe down the buses at the beginning of each shift and at the end of each shift. We have memos on the buses for individuals who are on the buses to practice the social distancing. And we also, in fact, this weekend, we had all of our vans and buses cleaned and sanitized professionally.
That's good to know. I just wanted to let the public know that, you know, in wake of this, that Connect Douglas was doing its part in trying to keep everybody safe and adhere to the, the orders that, washing, sanitizing, keeping distance. And now, with the help of the CDC saying that people should wear masks, it, you know, it would help to cut down the spread of it. I'm glad to know that we are doing those things. So, with that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthian. Okay, we're gonna move on. Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, just a couple of questions. So, Gary, with the guidelines that the CDC had put out, how are we, I mean, I'm assuming the ridership is extremely down, extremely low, if any? When it comes to the ridership, okay.
Yes.
And with that, so I'm assuming we're practicing not only the wiping down of the buses, but how many can be on the bus at any given time? Or how does that work? I'm just curious to know.
Well, with ridership down, practicing, practicing social distance, distancing on the buses has not been a problem. There's plenty of room for them to spread out and have a distance between them. And as I said, we do have memos on the buses. And we've also asked the drivers to remind the patrons as they get on to, to spread out and not sit close together.
Got it. And I guess my only, I guess, question was, where would people be going during this, I guess, stay-at-home type of a order from the governor? But with that, what effect, not the CDC, but what effect does this have with the change of the route that went down 20 and no longer goes down 20 with Cobb? And our relationship with Cobb and those who want to transfer to get to the homes and other places as such?
It's not, it's not changing that, that connection. The only thing that we're doing is, is taking Route 40 off of that stretch of I-20 from Fairburn Road to Lee Road. So, what we're doing with that Route 40 is we're sending it down Fairburn Road and then left onto Lee Road, back up to South Sweetwater.
Right.
So, that part of the route has not changed. It still goes and makes that connection with Cobb. And Route 40 has by far been our most popular, most utilized route. So, we're not doing anything to negatively impact it. In fact, what we're doing, we believe, will increase ridership on that particular route.
And I would agree, I would agree. I was just kind of making sure that that had no impact on our relationship with Cobb and our agreement with them for that transfer for those who are trying to get to Atlanta and other places. So, that connection still exists.
It's, it's still in play, yes, sir.
You got it, okay. Outside of that, I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, well, thank you so much, Director Watson. We're gonna move on to tab number 10. I'm sorry, tab number, yeah, tab number 10. Authorization to apply for fiscal year 21 CACJ, no, CJCC reimbursement grant for the Family Treatment Court and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director King, Jennifer King, are you? Is Jennifer King on the line? Or? Mark, can you take it for me?
Yes, Jennifer's on here. So, essentially, both, did you?
Um, so essentially both, the, did you mention both items or just the first one?
Well, I'm gonna read, let me read the next one as well, and then you could capture both. Uh, tab number, and my eyes are playing tricks on me. Tab number eleven, authorization to apply for fiscal year C J J, uh, C J C C Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. So that's both grants. If you could, um, explain to the board what these grants are, Mark, please.
Yes, ma'am. So both of these are annual grants that juvenile programs receives, um, from the state. And I'm looking, trying to look up the email really quick. But, uh, uh, one of them, I think the first one is for fifty thousand. And I'm looking at the second one. Yeah, the first one's fifty thousand and then the second one is around two hundred thousand dollars. And we've been applying and receiving these grants every year.
Okay, I'm so sorry. This is Jennifer. My connection went out for a second. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Jennifer, you want to add more to what the, uh, commis-, uh, county administrator just mentioned?
Um, I, I.
Jennifer, can you hear me?
All right. I think she's got some bad connection there or Spotify or something, so.
Yeah, so. Board of Commissioners, you're okay with these two, uh, items ten and eleven, tab number ten and eleven? Okay. We're gonna move on. Mark, if you'd just, uh, let Jennifer know that we, we, uh, concur and we're gonna move on, okay? We're gonna move, uh, tab number twelve, authorization to approve change order number zero, zero, nine with the Motorola Solutions for the Public Safety P dash twenty-five radio system and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Fire Chief Spencer, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Hi, hi, Fire Chief. Okay.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for, uh, looking at this item. Uh, basically, all this does is extend the end of the contract to June thirtieth of twenty twenty, uh, when we will be doing the final acceptance. Right now, uh, it was scheduled to be April thirtieth. But however, due to the COVID crisis pandemic that we're in, uh, and with the moratoriums have been placed, Motorola's been asked to have all their technicians work from home as well. So, uh, that, that's put the testing of the system, the final testing, uh, they, they need to bump it out another month. Uh, it has no cost impact to the contract. Uh, and, uh, we are currently using the system and the system is working well. This is just a, a legal requirement that's part of the contract.
Thank you so much, Fire Chief. Any questions from the board or comments? All right, Fire Chief, sounds good. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to tab number thirteen. Authorization to approve an annual renewal maintenance agreement for New World and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Martin, Russ Martin.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So this is actually just a continuation of the annual renewal that we typically do with, uh, New World. The reason that there's a new contract is we were actually under a five-year agreement previously. That five-year agreement ran out, uh, over the summer last year. So we just, uh, or we, we, we made the last payment last summer. So this year, we need to renew an agreement with them to continue maintenance. Uh, and that's what this is. It's a one-year recurring, so, uh, as long as we don't give ninety-day notice, uh, the next year will just pick up on its own. But as far as the cost goes, it's something we budget every year.
Okay. Thank you, Director Martin. Any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right, Russ, pretty self-explanatory. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to tab number fourteen. Authorization to approve a supplemental agreement, number two, to the consultant services agreement with VHB, uh, for the Maxim Road congestion mitigation and traffic flow improvements, uh, project in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to be funded from the SPOLOST funds set aside from Highway ninety-two, Mount Vernon Road for services during the project construction phase and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Um, Director Valentine, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, yes, uh, now that the project is under construction, uh, we have some, uh, changes and some planned reviews that we need to do in connection with this item. And, uh, that, uh, will allow for the project to continue to move forward. Uh, we found at the intersection of Maxim Road and Thornton Road that, uh, the initial design did not, uh, uh, account for the current, uh, radius that is allowed at the intersection. And so we're looking to make that modification as part of the ongoing services.
Okay. Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, I heard yes, but I.
Madam Chair?
Oh, okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, I couldn't make you, I couldn't understand. Okay. Vice Chairman.
There you go. Thank you. Greetings, Miguel. How are you?
Good morning, uh, Chair, uh, Chairman of the Committee.
Yep. All right. We, we hadn't talked in a minute, so no, we're good. Uh, we hadn't talked, but real quick, um, obviously, again, just to refresh everybody's mind, uh, this project that we're talking about, Maxim and Thornton Road, has been on the books for quite some time. And obviously, it's, it's a major, um, a major project as it relates to mobility, um, congestion, obviously, the eastern wall. Uh, we've got, obviously, all the traffic, all the truck traffic is going with that north-south on Thornton Road. Um, and obviously, we've got the I twenty corridor. Can you talk about what Maxim Road means from the Cobb and, and why we're doing this? Give, give that first, and then I'll get into my questions.
Yes, certainly. Uh, Maxim Road is a, a major corridor between us and, and the Cobb County traffic. And, uh, that turning movement there, uh, at the corner of, uh, where the Kroger is, uh, is rather tight because there's quite a number of lanes, but it wasn't initially designed for truck traffic. And so this is an opportunity with the improvements, a little widening of the pavement itself and, uh, some of the, uh, alterations to the light. Uh, we are gonna be able to open up that radius, to soften the radius, to facilitate, uh, turning movements by trucks onto Maxim Road. It is a fairly high-volume, uh, connection to Cobb County. And so, uh, with the signal improvements and the widening, uh, it will certainly improve traffic flow.
Okay. All right. So, so here's my question. And obviously, uh, most people who have been here for quite some time recognize that, if I recall, that Thornton Maxim is one of the most dangerous intersections in the state, especially the metro area. Um, other areas can claim it, but we've had several deaths in that area. Um, what we call vehicle-to-vehicle and vehicle-to-pedestria. And so this is something that obviously we've been, um, even since Madam Chair's administration, we've had to deal with and recognize that area needs to be fixed. All that, all that volume, and there's a lot of residents there, a lot of density. Uh, we have to do a better job of sort of, uh, you know, taking us from the place that we grew up as and bringing us forward. That being said, um, I, I want to talk about, while I support this one hundred, um, I heard that we're gonna use the funding source from the Mount Vernon Road Light. Now, explain that shift of money. Is there some type of savings, um, that, uh, we are able to realize from that Mount Vernon Light? Or are we saying we're about to compromise that Mount Vernon Light? Talk to me.
Yeah, uh, no, there, there is, uh, in fact, the construction of the traffic signal is well underway. And the expectation is that the exposure that we had anticipated the county would have potentially is not likely to materialize. Uh, construction is probably about seventy-five percent, uh, complete. And so far, there have been no additional expenditures that would incur, uh, any funding from the county. And so the funds that were originally set aside for that, uh, eventuality, uh, can now be freed up, uh, at least partially for other uses.
And, and we're accounting for that in our SPOLOST, right?
That is correct.
Light shift. Let's make sure we make a note of that accordingly. Uh, but we'll talk about it in committee. Madam Chair, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I know the citizens are very excited about that light at Mount Vernon and ninety-two. That's been a long time coming, and I believe some work has already started. I've seen some movement. So thank you so much, Director Valentine, for pushing that effort forward. We're gonna move on to tab number fifteen. Authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the county to provide in-kind services in connection with the LMIG and off-system safety striping, uh, projects and authorizing the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentine, I know we've already started striping throughout the county or restriping some of our areas. Can you elaborate on this particular item?
Yeah, yes, certainly. We have, we actually have two different, uh, striping programs underway. Uh, one that is partially funded, uh, through the state and one that is being done with the state, uh, with county funds to some extent for the local match. And this particular agreement is really an in-kind services agreement. There is no funding required from the county. It is fairly typical. And essentially, what, uh, what the state is, uh, requiring is that if there's any debris, any trash or any grassing that may be close to the edge of pavement, that the county go out and take care of that and clear the edge of pavement so that, uh, when the, their striping contract comes through, it would be, they would have the entire cartway of the paved area to stripe, uh, on. And, uh, this is something that we do a, as a matter of routine. Uh, but because there is a contract or a memorandum of agreement, uh, that, uh, that they require, it, it has to be approved by the board.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners or comments? All right. That's pretty self-explanatory. We are excited about the striping. They, it gives us a fresh look. Is that you, Commissioner Guy? Yes, yes, Commissioner Guyder. I can hear you.
I was raising my hand, but I don't know.
I can't see it, so thank you.
Miguel, uh, there's been a lot of complaints from citizens down toward the roundabout on Highway five and one sixty-six and about the striping on, um, I think Highway five. Uh, have you got any kind of update on that? And do you have any updates on the repavement, repaving of Highway one sixty-six? It is pothole city. It is a disgrace to this state. And I know it's a state highway, but do you have any update that you can give the citizens at this time?
Yes, I do, uh, Commissioner Guyder. I, I've had discussions with the District Seven Office of the Georgia Department of Transportation. Uh, they have assured us that they will be repaving one sixty-six as soon as the weather warms up. Uh, probably will be delayed a little longer than originally anticipated because of this, uh, coronavirus situation. But nonetheless, uh, they have assured me that, that they are going to redo, uh, this, the, the paving there in the summer. In the meantime, they will be, uh, patching the potholes. In fact, uh, I took a, uh, a gander out there a few weeks ago and I ran into, not ran into, but I came across one of the repair trucks, uh, patching potholes. So I know they're trying to address the pothole situation and they will be starting the repaving pro, program, uh, in early summer.
Well, let, let me interject. I hear from everybody that's traveling that road that the potholes that have been fixed supposedly are creating mounds. And it's like a mogul, uh, on a ski slope, I would say. And, uh, it's just poor workmanship on the part of the state of Georgia. But I, I assume when they redo one sixty-six, because it is a truck route now. Uh, when I say truck route, I'm talking about eighteen-wheelers. Um, they will actually chew up the old asphalt and put down, uh, a new layer. Is that correct?
Yes. Uh, that is correct. They, they will, uh, mill the road surface and actually patch the bad areas before they put a couple of different courses of new asphalt. So once, uh, the project is, the project is completed, uh, it should be able to handle truck traffic and have no more potholes, at least not for ten years or so.
What about the striping on Highway five that's, uh, been faded out for years? Uh, has that been done or is it in the works?
That is also in the works. Uh, they're, they're waiting for warmer weather to do that.
But you just, you just can't see where the lanes are. Um, and also the lighting around the roundabout on Highway five and one sixty-six. But, um, the state was supposed to install the lights and then work to maintain them. Do you know what the status of that is?
Yes. Um, again, I, I had, uh, conversations with the district office and they assured me that they had, uh, engaged a consultant to design, uh, the lighting system. Unfortunately, when they designed a project initially, they did not include, uh, lighting. Although the county had an agreement with them that if they did, the county would pick up the tab for the maintenance and the power bill. And that agreement is still in effect. Uh, they're essentially now going back and retrofitting, uh, that roundabout with new lighting, but it has to be designed and then bid out for construction. But that process is also ongoing.
And I know this is kind of off the topic, but I don't get to talk with Miguel like some of y'all do. So Miguel, um, the, uh, Highway five Douglas Boulevard, the state project right there at, um, is it CVS or Walgreens, whatever?
The cir-, uh,
Yeah. What is the hold of it? Seems like they have just stopped working there.
Um, well, initially, the, the issue had to do with the utilities. Um, the, there was a relocation of, uh, a stormwater line that had to occur and some work that was done by WSA as well to get, uh, their utilities out of the way. Uh, that held things up, but beyond that, uh, I'm not aware of, um, why there would be a holdup other than the weather. Of course, they, they cannot, uh, excavate when it, when we had all the downpours, but, uh, I, I'm not aware.
I would say since Christmas, when they fixed the water main issue and everything, there, there has been no, very little activity, if any, at that intersection. It just seems like it's been halted. And, uh, could you check on that for us, please, and, and get an update?
I certainly will, uh, but there has been activity there, uh, because I've been out there. But, uh, but you're right, it's taken longer than we had anticipated.
All right. With that, I yield back, Madam.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Guyder. All right, any other comment? I'm gonna.
Hit the wrong button, sorry.
Oh, okay. No problem. Okay, Board of Commissioners, um, certainly I just wanted to give us an opportunity to speak to the citizens this morning in terms of just provide some updates. And I wanted to see if Rick Martin is on the line by any chance and ask him if he could just, uh, up to date the citizens regarding just the things that we're doing from a communication perspective. Certainly, education is important and communication during this coronavirus pandemic. And we're doing some very creative things. We have a social media response team, a hotline. Are you available, Rick Martin? I, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just give us just a, just an update. I know this is, uh, impromptu, didn't want to throw you off. Just same presentation you gave the other day. Just tell them what we're doing, the Board of Commissioners, so they can hear.
Sure. Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Uh, Commissioners, what we've been doing is updating our website, celebratedouglascounty.com with the latest news and information. Uh, we've been providing, uh, situation reports that we receive from the EMA, not only placing it on Douglas County, um, I'm sorry, not only placing it on celebratedouglascounty.com, but as well utilizing our social media platforms such as Douglas County Facebook Happenings page as well. Um, we've also been emailing, uh, uh, our subscribers to Douglas County uh, Happenings e-newsletter, uh, nearly nine thousand subscribers. So we've been emailing. So we've been emailing communication to them as well regarding COVID-19 updates. We recently launched a website hub that is produced by our GIS department and we've been updating that daily with reports that we receive from the state as well as Cobb and Douglas Public Health. So we've been communicating as much as we can. We've also put together a social media response team in responding to questions that we receive via social media as well as phone calls in response to any questions regarding COVID-19 as well as answering emails when we've received questions from our citizens as well. So we've been pretty much responding 24/7, not just myself, but my entire team as well.
Thank you so much, Director Martin. Is Director Gilchrist on the line? Is, is she on the line by any chance? She's our Director of Senior Services. I wanted her to give the Board of Commissioners an update, but if she's not, I can...
I don't, I don't see her listed to the right on the list of...
Okay. I'll just give the Board of Commissioners a brief update and also I sent you all this information, Board of Commissioners, via email. So if you have an opportunity, or when you have an opportunity, please take a look at it. What we're doing, we're continuing our Meals on Wheels. Certainly, our non-medical, non-emergency medical transport services are still available to our seniors. We are playing virtual bingo, bingo from the Woody Fife Center to keep our seniors entertained because they have to, of course, we have them practicing social distancing. So all our seniors are primarily in, in their homes. Also, we, we had to just, right now, suspend our homemaker services because that certainly is in violation of that social distancing piece, but we will activate it as soon, as soon as the coronavirus pandemic ends. Also, so we, what we've done, we provided an update or just a, we've sent to nine thousand seniors an update and it's a guide, just giving them indications of what hours are available at various grocery stores and pharmacies specifically just for seniors to shop. So that's something that we really, we are excited and our seniors have been getting that information and also about travel, Uber and Instacart and all the services that are available to them. Instacart allows the citizens to place an order and have their groceries delivered to their doorsteps and all the citizens here in Douglas County by, in, by and large. Also, we have Sprouts that's been added to the list for our citizens that they want something more of like Whole Foods, but Sprouts is on our list so that they can, you or anyone can order from Sprouts now. We have a hotline that's been developed, not only for the citizens of Douglas County, but we have a senior, Dr. Gilchrist has activated a senior hotline. So, so the seniors can call in and just ask specific questions and, and express their concerns because the goal is to make sure that we hear all of our citizens' voices. And then also, last but not least, from the youth perspective, we had a youth, our youth commission chairman presented, he had a PSA sent out to our youth, just asking them to please practice social distancing, hand washing, hygiene, all those things that are important regarding this COVID-19 situation. So we, we cast a wide net and what I did yesterday, we had Jason Millholland, who is Millholland, who's our Director of Emergency Management, sent out to all our, it's called Code Red, an email with the frequently asked questions from, about Governor Kemp's Shelter in Place Executive Order. And Rick Martin has sent out that information to Facebook, which is happening, Celebrate Douglas. We put it on our website. We sent it to the City of Douglasville, to the school board. We're trying to just canvas the entire county. So there are some questions that the citizens may have about his, Governor Kemp's orders. Those questions, the frequently asked responses are coming directly from the governor's office. So we are really trying to keep all our citizens engaged and we want to make sure that they're at the table so they can hear all the things that are happening because things are changing by the month, by the minute. Okay? With that being said, is step, Attorney Stephanie Thompson on the line?
Chairman, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Today, our Ken Bernard is not here, who's the attorney for the county. We have Stephanie Thompson here. Thank you so much. She's representing his office and we appreciate you, Stephanie. Do, at this time, Stephanie, well, first of all, before I go any further, the Board of Commissioners, do you have any announcements for the citizens?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Vice Chairman Robinson, I hear your voice.
Yeah. Really quickly, and I appreciate the update. I was paying attention astutely to all the things that the administration was doing to, to make sure that the public is informed in light of Governor Deal's...
No, Kemp.
No, excuse me, Governor Kemp. Duly noted, Governor Kemp's recent action, his executive order. That being said, that means that we've been overwritten, right? We now are, have to be compliant with him unless we have higher restrictions. We can restrict for, but not less than. My question then becomes, which is, I've got to bring it back full circle. Are we still having a special call meeting this week first? And then a second question is that while we're telling everybody to back up, you know, social distancing and wash your hands, clean up, what are we doing regarding testing, right? I, I appreciate the efforts that, in, in having the public do their part. I think it's in parallel. We have to do our part. And your opening comments, I think is a perfect segue, great bookends. The opening comments was, I mean, obviously we're acknowledging what has happened in our community and obviously it's not over. But, but how we, we, we get there is to understand where do we stand? And I have to emphasize, where are we at with testing? And how are we approaching that? Because we, we can't lose sight of that. I mean, it, it's great to tell people to go stand in the corner, go home. But what are we doing? This is a medical issue. It's not an administrative issue. It's not a political issue. It's medical. So, I mean, again, what are we doing regarding testing? Can you get, and you may not know the answer, but then I don't, I don't need a forced answer or spin. I just want to know the truth. Where are we at with testing? Where? Resources? So that we can ultimately get the data that we need so that we can adjust accordingly? And I'm, I'm okay whoever answers that. I yield.
Okay. Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Is our director, Jason Millholland, on the line by any chance? Mark, is he on the line?
No, ma'am. Jason's not on the line, but it's my understanding Cobb Douglas Public Health has been working to get more testing sites in Douglas County and more test kits. And I don't have an update on that as of today, but we will provide that to the board and to the public on the website when we receive that information.
And I can, I can chime in, Vice Chairman, just kind of giving an update. What I do know, we are looking at a testing site coming here in Douglas County and it's going to be, the, the space that's identified certainly is, is, is based on physician's referral because of the shortage of tests all over the United States. So it's just not for everybody. It's, it's for physician referral and also, of course, our first responders. And that, the testing site right now, we're looking, it will be at our public health department, but it'd just be a drive-up. Same thing that most people are doing throughout the country, it'll be a station, knows that be, you, you'll have a swab done and of course the test will be administered and then, of course, the results will appear within a forty-eight hour period now. But there's, there's a new test on the arise, on the horizon that takes about five minutes. So we are actually working very intensively to obtain that test. And Dr. Memark shared with, I spoke with her yesterday and she said that test seems like it's almost at our fingertips, but we don't want to celebrate too early. So I, I don't have any firm concrete information about the five-minute test, but the testing site is, we're looking at perhaps, perhaps Tuesday of this week. And we, we, again, Tuesday is really a soft answer because I, when I spoke to her yesterday, we are looking at Tuesday of this week. But again, everything is still based on physician referral and that's what it's been for all other counties such as, you know, that I've been, I tried to find out, I said, what has been utilized all over the other counties? But everything now, because of the shortage of tests in the state of Georgia and in the United States, is, everything is based on physician referral. So stay tuned. Hopefully I'll be able to announce to the Board of Commissioners on Tuesday. We've gone live and then we will roll that information out to all the citizens of Douglas County. We do have more than just one area that's being, the hospital is testing, the, and some of our physician offices are testing. Commissioner Carthon had a town hall meeting this week and Dr. John Johnson, I believe, is testing in his office too, again, but he's a physician. So Commissioner, I hope that answers your question. I don't have anything firm for you right now because I'm waiting on Dr. Memark to give me her final, a final update today.
No, and, and, and you're fine, Madam Chair. And again, I wasn't putting you on the spot, but I believe between Director Millholland and, and Dr. Memark, we should be able to get our, get an accurate answer, which is, and, and I, and I get that we got the, the, the end result. We know how many people have been infected per se and we know how many people, obviously we've lost. But again, my concern is, but guys, we need to know about the asymptomatic, right? And so it's like we're, our, our approach to testing is, well, you got to get in queue and you got to wait. Well, we're, we're, it's an approach that's not anticipatory. I want to know how infected is the Garden of Douglas as a baseline? And I'm not saying test everybody, but I believe that there's, you, there's plenty of models out there. If this is a medical approach, well, do we need to test three thousand people? Five thousand people? I mean, and I'm, I'm just not getting the direction from our public health that I think we, it's like, like something's lost here. Like, okay, guys, this is not rocket science. And, and I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, I'm, I'm only concerned about Douglas. Not concerned about the surrounding counties, the surrounding states. Concerned about Douglas. I'm like, our, our lives were at stake here. Can we get a straight answer from our public health regarding, how are you going to approach testing? I've had enough surgeries to know how important when somebody, when you're going to take action, they come in there, well, we've got to test first and figure out where things are, then they prescribe. I thought this was medical. And that's, I'm, I'm so, it's not you, Madam Chair, and it's, it's really, I'm just looking for, and I think all citizens are wanting to know, where, where do we stand as a baseline? Didn't even go from there. But that asymptomatic is really the key. So I'm, I'm not looking for you to answer this. I'm looking for the guy, the, the person with the medical doctor that caused no harm, that doctor to sit there and say, okay, here's how we need to approach this. And I'm just not hearing it for Douglas. I'm, I'm still looking for the data. I mean, I see a lot of stuff coming out of Cobb. I see a lot of dispersion maps. I see a lot, like, okay, but what about Douglas? And so, I mean, obviously, guys, I mean, to my peers, you know where I'm going. And, and I really, Madam Chair, and so I still didn't get the answer. Are we meeting this coming Thursday for a special call or no?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm unaware of a special call. Mark, can you brief me or are you aware of a special call that was supposed to come down the pike?
No, ma'am. I was not aware of a special call meeting.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Did we not say we would revisit what we put in place two weeks ago? And, and if you're saying that the governor has overwritten that and that no longer exists, we said we would come back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The governor's order supersedes our, our shelter in place that we approved. So his, his order ends on the thirteenth and certainly if he extends his, his, it's still, that the one that we have in place is null and void.
All right. So, which is to my point, why I had to insert this today.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that was all. That's, we haven't had enough chance. Hold on, I'm finished.
Okay. Commissioner Guy.
Yes, just to elaborate a little bit about the new test has been approved by FTC and it's by Abbott and it will, it will give results in about five minutes and they are producing it as we speak. This is, although this is a new virus, there was no test for this new virus because we didn't know about it. So the government has already got a contract with Abbott to produce these tests and they're being made as we speak. And they'll give fast results. We won't have to wait two weeks to get results and you don't have to stick the swab all the way down your nose. I think it's actually done with the blood test, not sure about that, but that's good news. That is very good news.
Yes, ma'am. It is. Thank you so much. Are you yielding back, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't want to interrupt. Yes, that five-minute test rolled off on March twenty-seventh from Abbott Laboratories and we were, well, the laboratory, there was a problem with the swaps. The test was there, but you didn't, we didn't have swaps, but I believe we have those swaps now in the United States and we're able to move forward. To the supply and demand, just basic economics, which was not one of my favorite courses in college, but I know that if you don't have supplies, you can't make them meet the demand. And that's been the problem, not only for the, the world of the United States, but it's for Douglas as well. It's been supply and demand. I believe the plan, when we pick up and get those swaps and, and Dr. Memark didn't want to celebrate with me too early because we didn't want to tell you that and give you the false impression that they're here, but she said she's working on it. I spoke with her yesterday. And when we get that, those five-minute tests, that will be a game changer, not only for Douglas County, but it'll be for the state of Georgia. So any other Board of Commissioners, you have any comments before I ask us, our Stephanie Thomas, our attorney, we need to go into executive session?
I do have one. Commissioner...
Commissioner...
Just to relay back to what the commissions, the Board of Commissioners are asking, and I'm have to say this as delicate as possible, public testing. Public, the, the public is crying out not only to be tested, but to understand where we are as a county. But it appears that we get the song and dance and not that in a bad way, but we just need to know kind of where we are. But we're part of Douglas and, well, Cobb Douglas Board of Health. Now with that, from my understanding, Cobb has roughly two or three sites of drive-up testing. Don't know how long it takes, whether it takes fifteen minutes or it takes return results in two days, but it exists. My question is, why is it that Douglas County, being a part of that, don't have one site? Now, I'm not looking for an answer from you, Madam Chair, but I'm looking for an answer as to why don't we? Because it's about the public and it's about the public being tested to know exactly where Douglas County stands. And we're in the middle of Fulton, Cobb, Paulden. So I, I would believe, once we test, we'll better know where we are as a community to say, we may be a lot worse off or we could be better off. I don't know, only because we don't have the test. So my question would be to add to the question, the Q and A, why don't we have test kits? Or where can we get more test kits? And if that means the Board of Commissioners need to stand firm on funding to get this because I think down the road, we'll probably get this money granted back to us. But we can't stand by and wait versus trying to move forward and getting some sense of comfort as to where we are. Where are the kits? How can we get access to the kits? Because I know most of us have been talking to our state representatives and even some folks up at Congress that I've reached out to. So, but I, I'm just concerned that it doesn't seem like a sense of urgency to get the kits to Douglas County outside of testing the few tests that we've done. I don't know where to place this, you know, not to say we're trying to place blame. I'm just trying to see where can we help? If it's our caller that has to fund it to get it here, then let's do it. And I think this commission would probably do that. But we can't continue to sit and wait only to find that we may be in worse-off shape than a few other counties that's surrounding us versus let's just wait and see and, and decide on where we go from here once we get the next answer. So that's kind of where I am. I, I'm, I'm looking for an answer. I'm not looking for, because the citizens are asking us and I know you're probably getting just as many calls and emails as I am. Where are we? How can we find out where we are as a county, as a community versus, well, we got three kits or we got five kits and it's at the Board of Health and it's at Hunter Park? And correct me if I'm wrong, is there a, a supposedly, a, a Hunter Park is supposedly be a place of testing here soon or later or, or was that happened or didn't happen? Can somebody help me with that?
Yes, Commissioner, I can certainly... Yes, Commissioner, I can certainly help you with the, first I wanna add to your discussion or your, some of your comments. Lisa Crossman was at my town hall meeting. I hosted her on Thursday. She spoke specifically to Douglas County and where we are in a position, provided a power, PowerPoint presentation. So we didn't veer off course and talk about any other county but Douglas County. Uh, your other question, I believe, was, what was your, what was your second question? You wanted to know where we are with our testing. Um, our testing, we have had referrals just like everybody else's and, and it's based on physicians' referrals. So we're not delaying any of our tests. Everything still is based on physicians' referral. And we have more than just Cobb's testing site. Again, like I said, the physicians' offices, some are testing and the hospital, Wellstar is testing, uh, quite a few patients, especially the ones that are being, uh, recommended by our, our, our physician's office. So we have not just sit here and not done testing. We have 91 confirmed. Uh, the number is still increasing. We are sitting on the wall. I'm, I'm surprised that some of the, even the ones that have been referred to the, by the physician, because we sit in the armpit of Fulton. If you look at that line, the way the map is set up, we are on the border of Fulton. I'm surprised that there are not more. It may be more. Again, the problem has been just this, this, uh, this shortage is not just only specific to Douglas County. It's specific to the whole nation and the money is not the problem. Uh, the public health department, we have plenty of money in our fund balance. I'm, you know, I sit on that board. I'm one of the board of directors. So we have the money and as, uh, Dr. Me Mark said, it's not the money. It's just the ability to get the supplies. Hopefully this week we have some more promising news and I'mma ask you, answer your question about Hunter Park. That was on our list, but in order to expedite it even faster, we're gonna go with the site this week at our public health department. You know, the library is closed, so we're gonna open that site up and they're still working on the Hunter Park site. So it may be an opportunity for two sites here, Commissioner.
So, so, okay, let's use Hunter Park. I, I'm not sure as to who came up with that idea of using Hunter Park, but that's okay. Hunter Park and the site of the public health. How many test kits do we have? Should we make a, a public announcement that we have one or 101, uh, kits? Or are we just testing the workers or the frontline individuals? Kinda where are we with that? Cause I think, I think we're just, we're just not, I don't know if we, not, okay. I, I'll, I'll, I'll let you, I'll, I'll ask my next question after that though. Go ahead, Madam Chair, if you wanna comment.
No, I, I, I don't have a response simply for Dr. Me Mark. That's, that's the physicians, public health officials. I was, the physicians. I'm just giving and relaying the information that she has given me. Certainly, um, when we get off the call, I have another call with her, her today. Uh, Douglas County and other counties are the same. Like I said, I do know Carol has a, um, abundance of tests. And what they did early, they got out of the gate a little early and purchased quite a few tests, but they're just not testing all their citizens based on what I've received. They retain, they're still on physicians' referral. So everything is with, uh, physician referral and frontline. Uh, I believe that's why that social distancing piece has just been so important because, again, you could be tested today. For example, if I, if I go to be tested, and I'm gonna put my medical hat on just for a second. And I go in, I'm negative today, but that does not mean that I'm not gonna be negative tomorrow if I go to the store. In the room. So that's what I'm saying. So that we're trying, that's why they're trying to utilize the testing, uh, effectively.
Got it. Okay. But I, I still think the test kits is what I think I hear that we need. But let me ask one last question.
Yes.
You said 91 confirmed. How many tests were done to even get to that number? Or do you know? I mean, that may be a question.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I would have to get that information from, uh, Me Mark.
See, and that's why I think maybe it's me and, and, and I can't speak for the rest of the board. That's why I feel like we're, the lack of, it's not that.
I could, I can ask her for that. We can get, how many tests were done and how many were confirmed?
I, I, I've talked to Dr. Me Mark. So I, I mean, we've had many conversations. So I, I mean, I can ask that same question and, and I can pose, uh, many questions outside of that. But I'm, my concern is public testing. Now, whether you've tested a, uh, negative, test tomorrow, positive. But, but, but how many tests that we need or we trying to get to do the public outcry of being tested? How do we get that, that need met? And it's not a question for you though, Madam Chair. I'm only making a statement. So outside of that, I, I'll yield the floor and you guys can kinda continue on.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Guyder, it looked like you wanna say something.
Well, I, I do.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Carthen, hey.
So, um, one of the things that I think, um, the public is confused on is private testing versus public health testing. Private testing means you will come out of your pocket for that testing. Some insurances will cover it, some will not. If you test and you test negative, that is coming out of your pocket. If you test positive and you have to get treatment, then that is when the insurance company will pick it up. So I just had to put on my hat for, you know, insurance to, to let people know. So, um, but public health, your testing is free. But that is why I think a lot of people, you know, in this day and age, they would like the public health, you know? And, and I'm of the same sentiment as, um, my, my other two previous colleagues that, you know, we have to push and be very forceful, especially in this time for our particular constituents. And I'm really concerned about, uh, the ones that have called me, my seniors, who, uh, who have a number, a referral from their physician to get tested. And again, they can't go to Wellstar cause Wellstar is not testing them. Yet they can't go to public health because it's too far because the public health site is in Marietta, which I think, you know, speaks for itself. We, we should not have allowed for Cobb Douglas Public Health not to put at least one site in Douglas County. That just did, did not sit well with me when, when I found that out. Um, however, I just want the public to know that there, there is a difference. Public testing and private testing are two different things. If you have a concern and you really wanna be tested, please ask your physician to call around to a private physician and see if you can push testing. We don't want anyone to be, uh, in fear of not having, um, the test or exposing your family. Uh, but with that, Madam Chair, are you?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Guyder, I see your face moving. Are you saying anything? You good? Okay.
I'm good. I'm just, you know, I'm hearing a, a, a lot of negative, uh, things about the Cobb Douglas, uh, public health. But they can't get something that's not made yet. Uh, this is a new test that has come out that is effective and gives results within five minutes. The other one, as you heard, um, Dr. Me Mark, uh, say the other day that it took two weeks sometimes to get the swabs back that go way back into your nostril. But, uh, this is an entirely new one and it's being manufactured as fast as they can do it. They just were released to do, to make these tests. And they're coming down the pipeline and just remember, we've got, I don't know how many, what the population of the United States is, but I assure you, some of these hotspots gonna get it before we do. It's just the way it is. But we'll, we'll get them, but, um, as soon as they can make enough of them. But, um, I do think that we should have had a testing site here in Douglas County. Because, I mean, why not? If they've got three, why shouldn't we have had one? So, uh, maybe we can address that at a later date. So with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Real quick, and I, we, we can close it out and I agree with Madam Guyder's another day. Right? So again, back to my point, which is it was always about testing and data. Right? I, I, I get the sheltering in place, right? That's the citizen part, like, okay, go to your corner. But what is the administration doing their part? They don't get out, get off the hook. There's so much, if so, what the public should be doing. But what is the administration doing to coincide with what the, the, the impact? Loss of business, perhaps loss of life, perhaps, um, just, just, just the, the mental duress is about to come. The tsunami coming over the wall. And I think what you're hearing from the, the collective voices of the commission, like, look, there is no urgency. It's like, well, we're going through the processes, all this, we're, it's excuses. I thought our lives were at stake. There needs to be a little bit more urgency. Right? Douglas County is one, one in the top 20 in populous counties. And yet we're being swallowed by Cobb. I mean, obviously the big, they're part of the big five, will never be them. But we can hold our own. We went through this with our community service board. We need to separate from Cobb because we can hold our own. And that's what I, what, that's what I peeked the other day while I had to vote note, like, wait a minute, they getting everything over in Cobb? It's like, well, what about Douglas? Y'all get like, what about Douglas? And, and quit giving them room to say, it's okay. No, it's not. I'm not, anything against Cobb. Go on Cobb, do your thing. You taking care of your own. But we're being swallowed in this thing and it's like, nobody gets the fact that like, no guys, it's unacceptable. We're the 14th most populous county in the state and yet we have no testing? It's not that we're broke. You're right. It's not about money. Then what the problem is, it's not about, we've got buildings that we can't use, whether it's, it's the mall or wherever that, okay. It, it doesn't seem like there's no focus. I don't wanna hear about something new and innovative. We hit like, guys, are y'all not paying attention? You gotta move faster. Move faster. That's all we're saying. I appreciate Commissioner Mitchell's point about like, well, we, we, like, no, you gotta call it. Our lives are at stake. You can't open a meeting and say we're losing life, but then yet we're talking about a bureaucratic process. Well, we'll get around to it. Like, no! My life is at stake. Right? So that's where you see more of a, a more direct like, okay, my family's at stake. My neighbors are at stake. My district is at stake. Like, no, that, this state and the agencies don't get off the hook to say, well, they just like, no, I thought our lives were at stake. Right? This, this is not optional. There's a pandemic. We're not in control. So it, it just needs to be a better alignment of reality. You can't have the public jump through hoops and then we as the administrator, just sort of like going business as usual. They need to be aligned and that's the whole point. Like, well, what about the citizens? No, take care of employees. Take, take, take care of the responders. Got it. Right? But at the same point, the public has, they have a right to know where we stand from a testing. Right? I, I keep emphasizing that, like, okay, well, what is the condition? Quit rationalizing everybody around us. I wanna know, okay, if I'm doing this, if I'm taking hits on my, my, my digest, I'm doing all these things, well, what's my condition? Test me. If it ain't about money, what is the problem? That, that's why it doesn't make sense. It's irrational. Why don't you wanna know the truth? Why are we suppressing the numbers? Test the people to get a baseline to understand, are we high risk, moderate risk or low risk? See, I'm not seeing the advanced medical, cause I can look at the other places, as you say, like, okay, we're not talking the same, the right language. It's just like, it, it's not like, come on, guys, our lives are at stake. So again, since we don't have a chance to go, you know, now the governor's taken over, that's fine, which should have been done from the beginning. I, I get it. But we became data points for him on his map to say, well, he need to do what he need to do. But yet we still are lacking data for us. Where's my dispersion map? Right? I see Dr. Me Mark out on TV for Cobb, like, okay, but where's my data? Because we haven't tested, right? So when you, it's like, guys, we have no idea. And again, it's the asymptomatic is the issue, not the referrals of people who are like, haha, coming in. It's, that's the issue. It's that silent person. We wanna get into this rationale. You gotta, you gotta get out in front of this. Yeah, it, it's like, okay, it's like, we just, it's not making sense. Right? So I, I pray that, 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 that people are hearing this, that the public will continue to put pressure and demand this. It's, it's like, we want testing. I mean, it should be up tomorrow. It should be up by the end of this week, not, we'll get back to it. Give me a date when it's gonna be up. It's been two weeks. And we're still talking. It's been two weeks. I can only imagine with the data, we went up to five, we went up to 91. Like, are y'all not paying attention? So where's, like, let's get ahead of this. It's not over. So anyway, I, 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 again, our lives are at stake. The rest of this stuff that we're talking about and it didn't was while it, it's important. We gotta keep the government going. I mean, we, we can't lose sight of the fact that like, okay, we are in a pandemic. I'm not just sitting in my home having this, this telegraph about as if that, that, that virus is not still out there. So there needs to be a mapping of our, of like, no, we get it. And, and recognizing the public that we, we hear you public that are now beginning to wake up to the point of, yeah, well, where does Douglas stand as relates to testing? So we appreciate your commentary because again, we will advance that to say, we need to know where we stand. Uh, we're not asking for a vaccine, that, that'll come. Doc forcing, they got that. They're in the corner. Let them do what they do. But in the meantime, you got me in the corner. Okay, so where, where do we stand? All right. So you guys get it. Hopefully we'll work through this and Madam Chair, it's not yours to handle. Um, uh, again, it, it's really a public health issue, uh, and so I yield the floor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner. We're gonna, okay.
I think that was Mark, but I'll.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay, okay. And, and I'll, and I'll close and I'll, and I'll leave this alone. But I just wanted to make sure we understand, this is not about, uh, Cobb versus Douglas. This is not to tear down or, or say any bad things about Cobb. I think my colleagues and all of us are, are, are trying to understand if there's a need, if it's dollars to get kits. If, and it's not about the old kit versus the new kit. It's about getting tested. Whether you are tested positive or negative, we'll deal with that when we cross that bridge. But my biggest concern is the urgency doesn't appear to me that we have a sense of urgency. We just have a sense of, okay, we'll wait and our turn will come when we get there. The citizens of Douglas County are just as important as those in Cobb, Fulton, DeKalb and anyplace else. What will it take for us to show the urgency to our constituency that the test is important? We hope that you don't have it. I hope that it doesn't cost your insurance company and/or yourself any other dollars and cents. But I'm willing to fork out the dollars to make sure that I'm tested and make sure that I'm, I'm good to go. Versus trying to wait to see whether I get the new kit or the old kit, whether it's gonna take me two days to know, let me 15 minutes to know whether I'm positive or not, or two weeks to know. So I just hope we don't lose focus on the need and the necessity of having the test done. And for us to be a part of a Cobb Douglas, uh, family, I just can't quite understand for them to have two or three sites of testing, but yet we have zero. But just now, we've got Hunter Park now and/or the public, uh, building, the public health office to do it there as well. Or you can go to your private doctor and so on and so forth. But for the general public, the only request that I'm getting, or the majority of requests are, when, how can we be tested to assure that this community is safe? I think we're practicing all the CDC guidelines. But how can we assure these guys that they're, they're not, not a positive one within our family, the Douglas County family? That's all. I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. So I just wanna chime in before I give you the floor, Mark, before I yield the floor. Uh, there isn't it, uh, it's been a very blatant and, uh, uh, very out front urgency, uh, on my behalf. And certainly I, I'm not gonna defend Cobb Public Health, uh, Cobb Douglas Public Health, Health, uh, doctors or physicians. But I've been standing on their desk and I have not just stood on their desk. I've gone to Senator Dugan's office and I've even gone up to the US Senate to talk about this. And at the end of the day, we have the money to buy tests. We, the tests are not available. It's again, supply and demand. I feel just like you, very frustrated because the test is not there. But as a 40-year healthcare and, uh, professional, I would be remiss not to just go crazy. But my style is to remain calm. The citizens elected me to be a calm leader under, uh, extreme pressure. And I'm telling you, I am behind the veil, just pounding on those desks. I had a conversation with Dr. Me Mark yesterday. I talk to her at least once a day and that, that news that she shared with me on yesterday was great. The good question is, why don't we have something in Douglas County? That's a question that me and her, our, our debate will have later because Douglas County needed a site as well. We did move forward with the community service board because as a result of me wanting to take that community service board and just go solo with Douglas County, uh, only for Douglas County. And I appreciate the board of commissioners stepping up, providing the $450,000 overlay, uh, yearly to help support that effort. And that's something we could talk about going forward. But this coronavirus pandemic sneaked up on all of us. So they're pivoting. I, I'm placing pressure. Lisa provided a dispersion map presentation to the citizens of Douglas County. She had that map available at my town hall meeting, uh, on Thursday. And, uh, we had, uh, at least 15,000, we had quite a few people, at least over 1,000 people on the, uh, internet looking. We had a Facebook Live. So the map is there. So some of the things, I, I know I'm, I'm just as frustrated as, as my district commissioners. And I've been pushing. And I've been pushing and pushing, but on the outside, I have to remain calm so I can get some results rather than, you know, like I say, I'm standing on everybody's desk saying what we need. We need testing. Money is not the problem. It's just that the, the, the supplies is just not there in the United States. We're looking at New York. We're not looking, we're looking at Illinois, all those. We're not the only ones that are crying. This is a nationwide crisis. And Douglas County, I'm, I am the biggest cheerleader and I'm up front fighting for my county. And believe me, I've been fighting since the moment this thing took place. Right now, the only thing I can shield us with is education and prevention. Is social distancing is key right now. That's our weapon and our hand hygiene until these tests come available and keeping your surfaces, your metal surfaces at home, your stainless steel surfaces clean. I wish I had a remedy that I could wave, a magic wand. But what I have done for our citizens to give you a weapon to, to defend yourself until a test is available. And I believe that tests should be available real, real soon. I'm hoping I have some good news for the citizens this week. Mark, can you take the floor?
Yes, ma'am. So I just received information from, so Cobb Douglas Public Health, they're ready to test in Douglas County. They have appointments made tomorrow at the Health Department on Salmon Drive. And how do you get those appointments? So they come from doctor referrals only. But they are ready to test and they have appointments made for tomorrow.
Thank you, Mark. Again, I had that conversation with Dr. Me Mark yesterday, again, standing on the desk of these people's desk saying, I got to have testing here in Douglas County and that's been done. So District Commissioners, I want to assure you that I'm, I might, don't let, allow my calm demeanor fool you that nothing is being done. That's what I've been trained to do in this medical arena is to stay calm under pressure. So what I want to do, ask our Stephanie Thompson, attorney, do we need to go into executive session at this time?
Chairman, there are no matters for executive session today.
Okay, you said no matters, nothing today?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioners, we have, we do not need to go into executive session. And if there's nothing else to come before this board, any other comments? I'm excited about our, our testing site that will start on tomorrow for the citizens here in Douglas County, again, based on physician referral. We made one step further in the right direction. And I'm so appreciative of all the support of our Board of Commissioners and, and the patience and consideration from our citizens of Douglas County. I promise you, we will still continue to shield you with education because that's very important in communication along this way. Again, I believe I heard you, Vice Chairman, before I close up.
Yeah, no problem. Two things, make sure that Stephanie, stand in council calls me at this meeting. And secondly, I, I think the sentiment about the testing is, what we're saying is that we want to be more competitive. Right, right, it is supply and demand, economics 101. What are we doing to be more competitive than the next guy? Right, it's just not, don't wait until they do your hand and this is only your allotment. No, you got to go, let's go talk to Chris probably. How do we become more competitive? It's not enough to just sit there, guys. I, I can't worry about everybody else. I get it. It's on so many fish in the sea. I get it. But what are we doing to get, be competitive against this scarce resource? So it's the language that we're using that again, it's one of those where I'm still not hearing it. Show me your competition. Show me how you go get that done. Don't just wait till they do your hand. We have some independence. You, you are in executive mode. Like, okay, you're going to give me that amount. That's really only covering our, what, what we want to call our employees. But what about everybody else? You don't even have the framework for the numbers. And I keep going back like, guys, y'all, we're not there. I won't belabor this moment, we can take it offline. But again, we'll, we'll mark this because we're moving so fast. This is not like we come to each session and we wait two weeks. That's the only reason why, why we got the floor, you got to drive. It's like, gosh, this is every day, every hour, right? Madam Chair, every, you know, every twelve o'clock, twelve oh five, one o'clock, you doing your thing. So don't get us wrong. We get it. It's moving at lightning speed. So since we got the floor, we're saying, okay, we got to be competitive though. Duly noted. I can't worry about the other hundred fifty-eight counties. I get there's going to be a mountain, just like Senator Majority Dugan wouldn't. I see that he was able to go get Carol what they needed. That was competitive. Made a phone call. Other people had needs, but it showed up for Carol. And all I can say is, I ain't got no problem with that. Commissioner Mitchell said, I ain't got no problem with everybody else. But what about us? I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know what I, my, you know, my, my saying is there's no room for second place and we definitely are fighting. And now, again, I wanted to let you know that Senator Dugan's office and our joint at the hip, in fact, I have direct line into the governor's office. That's how much pushing I've done. And I will make sure I follow with Dr. Me Mark and we'll, we'll talk some more because some of those questions y'all had, Commissioner Mitchell, you had a great one. How many have we tested out of the ninety-one? How many were not positive or should I say negative versus the ninety-one that are positive? And I'm quite sure she could give me that information, okay? And I'll get you all the information that you asked for. We are moving full steam ahead in Douglas County. I can say we've made a lot of, a lot more progress than other counties and we are, we, we compete. That's what we do here in Douglas County. So I just want to make sure. And I've been trying to keep you all abreast of everything we're doing and actually sent you a nice, long, lengthy email on Friday night or Saturday night. So please look at your emails. We have a, a meeting today, a town hall meeting with Congressman Scott, Board of Commissioners. You're welcome to do that. I sent you the information. So please look in your emails. I'm, I'm running a hundred miles a minute, but I am providing you with up to, up to the minute updates as we go. So I just ask at this time if you just focus on your emails. We also had, we're providing you weekly reports of what's going on in each department so you could see what, what all of our department leaders are doing to make sure that our process is seamless during this COVID-19 situation. So with that being said, Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before us, I thank you and this work session is adjourned. Thank you.